We will call this meeting to order. Please stand for the flag of allegiance.
The flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have roll call please Ashley.
Councilor Grove?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Delacan?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Um, I always like to start the meeting with I guess Mayor Waller's little words of wisdom for the day so I'll staying with that. I will uh just read a little quote that I thought is appropriate for tonight. "Obstacles are those frightful things you see when you take your eyes off your goals." Um, you know that's kind of what we do here. You know, we take obstacles and look at them and try to turn them into opportunities so it appears that we may have an opportunity tonight to turn some of these obstacles into opportunities so that being said, uh we'll move on with the uh agenda. The first item of action that we'll need to do is approve the agenda so I'll looking for a motion from the council to approve the agenda. We had the one item of course that we added there. Uh, the application for exempt permit for the Church of the Assumption of the Blessed Virgin Mary.
I'll move to approve the uh agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed same sign. Motion carried. Okay, now we will move on to the citizens comments portion of the meeting and and this is the portion where uh first of all, thank you all for coming. This is your opportunity to approach the council and uh express uh your concerns and your views and I just uh would like to lay down just a few ground rules um as you uh we just asked that when you uh want to speak and address the council, you approach the microphone. Uh state your name and your address and then you can have at it and there's a few of us here in attendance tonight so I guess just be respectful of each other's time and uh if you would like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're of course more than welcome to. But after the citizens comments portion is over, if you would decide to leave, you can do that as well so with that, I guess I will uh open it up for citizens comments so if you want to approach the council and address the council now would be a good time and whoever wants to be the first brave soul up that is fine.
My name is John Riley and I live at four six four four seven Wintertown Lane in uh my name is John Riley. My address is four six four four seven Wintertown Lane, Morris. I had uh I had two questions to start with but uh Kevin answered one of them. I was gonna ask if you were you hear all kinds of rumors if Seventh Street was gonna get done this year and Kevin said that they're gonna vote on it tonight. The second question is uh if you do do Seventh Street, is there gonna be water and sewer in it?
The motion that was taken at the last meeting was actually voted down and that was to do Seventh Street without doing city water and sewer and um Blaine maybe you want to provide a little background but we are kind of up against the the wall on a grant that we have pending. It's a 1.6 million dollar grant that was authorized to spend on this project. So that was kind of what moved this project, I guess, ahead. We were awarded that grant and we need to take some action on that grant or we may lose that grant and that opportunity to spend that money so that's kind of what brought us up to the point where we're at today.
Well, if you don't put water and sewer in Seventh Street, I'd like to ask the city council, why did you have an annexation and 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 annex all the people that you did into the city? And none of them have water and sewer, including our, my place of business on Seventh Street? Not only uh not only along Seventh Street but also also over in Hillside Edition. You annexed that into the city. It looks like the city has no intention to put water and sewer in there. Since you annexed Hillside Edition into the into the city with no no of the uh no other stuff that like water and sewer like everybody else gets. There's been one lot sold in that addition and that went to a a current homeowner that lived there. He bought a second lot. There's been nothing sold in that addition since you annexed it. And I guess I want to know why you annexed all this property and it seems like you have no intention of giving them the services that everybody else in this city has, like water and sewer. We all pay city taxes but we get nothing. Absolutely nothing. If you can name me what we get because we're in the city of Morris, please tell me now.
I don't know how you want to handle this.
Are we just uh
So, two things. One is that the recommendation that I made at the last city council meeting which was voted down was that we move ahead with Seventh Street uh the fed- federal money project without water and sewer. And the reason for that is because we cannot afford to put water and sewer in. So now you asked another question. You said, "What do you get for your money?" You get everything that we get in the city limits. Water and sewer isn't part of it. We do not pay taxes for water and sewer. Development of property, when it's done, that infrastructure is paid for by the developer when it's done. The uh commercial development project that took place where uh Heartland Motors is, the developer puts in all the infrastructure, water, sewer, roads, everything. And when you sell lots, then the lot payers pay for that infrastructure. And once that infrastructure is put in and the city takes it, then when the time comes to redo the infrastructure, whether it's the street, the water, the sewer or whatever, that is paid for by special assessments. The city assesses 25% of the road, 75% of the water, 75% of the sewer. Uh, we assess 100% of curb and gutter. We assess typically 100% of sidewalks. And and realistically, water and sewer and those utilities are paid for not by the city taxes but by fees. That's how it's paid for. And so, one of the things that I shared with the city council last time is that in order to put water and sewer out in these neighborhoods, number one, the assessments for lots would be about 38 grand apiece, the assessments. That's if we're doing a 75% assessment for putting in utilities. But we never do the initial utilities at all. So it's important to understand that. And so then the city share of that project, if we put water and sewer in that whole neighborhood out there, including Hillside, the city utilities would go up about uh if we're doing 75%, water would go up about 90%. So every per- every person paying the utility bill in the city of Morris would have their utilities go up about 90%. And the sewer portion of that would go up about 140%. Cause that's how utilities are paid for. They are not paid for by taxes. So one of the questions you asked was, "Why did you annex into the city?" I wasn't here. I don't know what that discussion was but I know and understand that the actual language in the a- annexation prohibited us from forcing people to go on to water and sewer for a period of time. So we weren't even allowed to make people go on water and sewer but but the ultimate question is, who pays for water and sewer? Property owners pay for water and sewer. When it's initially developed, it's 100%.
You've said that already.
Yeah.
But you still didn't answer my question.
Well, I'd I'd like to
What do we get? Wha- what do we get?
You get everything and actually I shared with the city council what you get. You get everything else we do. You get the city council, you get administration, you get finance. You get the people that fought the the uh the uh the storm that we had. You have public works, you have parks. If you ever use a park, if you ever use a a library, if you ever use a business that was assisted through economic development. If you've ever had a kid that was part of a recreation program, that's where all of our money goes to. We have a transit system. We have an airport that services industry in Morris. That's where the money goes for. Those are all the things that taxes go for. And quite frankly, of all the things that we do, taxes pay about 22% right now of the cost of what we do. The rest of it is paid for through grants and state aids and other things but
But everybody else gets water and sewer.
And they pay for it.
They paid for it. They paid for it initially.
You're telling me that every everybody that's got water and sewer in this town paid for it?
Initially, yeah.
I I mean, I'd like to, you know
I don't think so.
I'd like to address your, you said something about Hillside. It's it's kind of unique because now I'm on the other side. I was living in Hillside when we were annexed in. And had been there two years. Uh, you know, bought the lot right on, right outside of the city, could access it. Nice, paid cheap amount of money for it. Hey, I I'm in a township. I only paying half of the taxes and it's great. I got my own well. I got my own sewer. All of a sudden, we're in an annexation. Okay? I never thought of that when I moved there. I mean, I, you know, I'd never owned a place in Morris at that time. Uh, and everybody in there, we're, we all been, hadn't been there that long. We had brand new wells and brand new sewer systems. Well, we're, we're looking at $25,000 tab to hook up. The city was gonna come in, annex us all in and we had to pay $25,000 apiece and hook up. Well, I'm like, "Well, we can't do that. I can't afford to do that." So through this annexation, we knew it was gonna happen. The state of Minnesota was gonna allow the city to do it. There was nothing we could do about it. So all of us just got together. We decided that we'd be annexed but they couldn't make us. We wanted them not to like make us hook up to city water and sewer. And that's what we did. So we weren't, we didn't, they didn't make us hook up to city water and sewer. We got annexed in. Uh, the taxes just kind of incremented up over a couple of years to where we got up to full, paying our full taxes. Okay? So I'm I'm pretty much, I was not living in any of the other sites that kind of came in down Seventh Street. But that's probably the same thing that happened. And you you ask why we don't have city water and sewer. It's because whoever developed those areas didn't put it in. And it should have been put in because it was in, within a half a mile of the city and pretty much would have known that it was going to get annexed in at some point in time.
They're not all that way.
I'm not saying they're all that way but they should have been that way.
My shop is right, right on Seventh Street.
Right.
That, that shop has been there for 25 years.
Right, so
I don't care if, I don't care if you give us water and sewer. But then don't have us pay the taxes for it.
You're not, you know, see you're missing it, John.
I'm not missing anything. I know all about what you said.
Because I live in the city. I get a bill every month for water and sewer. It's it's separate from my taxes at the end of the year. I pay taxes at the end of the year or twice a year for all the other services. I get a bill every month for water and sewer.
Okay, what you want
These guys, everybody that has a city that has a well and a septic system, they do not get a bill for water and sewer. I do.
Well, tell you what I get a bill for. We gotta pump our septic tank every week. Get 11,000 doll- it's over 11,000 dollars a year.
Yeah, and I I I know what you mean. I I gotta pump it. I work too.
I would just like to pause just for a second. Uh, I think we're probably all in agreement that a mistake was made several years ago when these developments were put in. The lot sizes were too small because what's at issue, if I understand, most of the people that have called me is they're, they're up against the wall with failing septic systems and the lots are so small that according to MPCA standards, there's no room to put another septic in. So we, of course, when those properties got annexed in, way back when the city accepted the zoning uh the zoning laws that were in place and those lots are just too small. So this council had, we're, it's not our fault. And again, it's not our fault but it is our charge to try to fix this thing. So we're all, we all just need to take a deep breath here and figure out so we can all figure out what's gonna be the best approach for this community long range. Because if you take a short view of things, then it makes sense to probably do the road without the sewer. And I'm not even sure at that point, if you look at it that way, that it even makes sense. But I think what we need to do is take a long view of this thing. Seventh Street is the, a major trunk highway that comes into our city. Um, it it leads right up to Eagles Ballpark. If you look at this even from a tourism standpoint, how many, how much revenue does that ball field generate for this community each year, spring, summer and fall? A lot. So there's a lot of ways we need to look at this project. It's you individual homeowners, I understand, you business owners, you have concerns. But I think we just need to just calm down and we'll figure this thing out. And that's what we're here for. So go ahead, John.
Got another question?
Sure.
About two or three, four years ago, you updated the water facility out there, the water treatment plant. We don't get no water. We have to bring in bottled water because we can't drink the water. And I'm sure we're not the only ones. They have no intention of giving us water. You talk about all the services we get. Why don't you talk about the ones we don't get a little bit?
Well, and I can tell you on that one, so it was an 18 and a half million dollar project. We got 12 million in state grants for it. We borrowed $6 million to put in the water treatment plant and that is being paid for as part of the rates that everybody's paying for the water.
We don't get the water though. That's fine if you're getting the water.
You're not being charged for it.
I pay city taxes. I am too getting charged for it.
Not for water. You're not getting charged for water and
Don't tell me that.
Well, you, you, you can, you can stand there all night and disagree and that's fine.
I am disagreeing.
Disagree but
I am disagreeing with you.
Other people here want to talk about it but
Go ahead, talk about it.
That is the way it works.
That's the way it works but it isn't fair is all I can tell you.
John, thanks for your, your point of view. Uh, I'll get to you down in a minute. Go ahead, Brian. We'll take turns here. Again, just be respectful of each other's time, okay? I know we all, I'm gonna give you all a chance to speak so
Thank you. Uh, Brian Geez, 20899 468th Avenue. Uh, thanks for the opportunity to come and talk today. Uh, this is a complicated issue. I think I have some unique perspectives about this. Uh, in 1996, I worked for Stevens County. Uh, when we reconstructed Seventh Street as County Road 21, I remember very specifically Merle Early, the engineer at the time, begging uh then Ed Larson to put in the trunk highway or the trunk utilities down this road. Uh, as these developments were just started, I think the one I live in was platted around 1992. Maybe the one next to us right around that 96 timeframe. So not all the houses were built yet. It wasn't totally built out. And the response was essentially, "There's no way the city will ever uh annex this area. It's not plausible." Um, and so there's kind of this unique circumstance that's hard to get, you know, people's heads wrapped around. Uh, the city did have zoning authority and signed the plats allowing it not to have utilities. Uh, so the presumption of landowners at the time would certainly be, "This is gonna be a township and we're gonna have to pay township taxes." And that's kind of all changed, right? And I think as that happened, there's some assumption that when the time is right, we'll get some of these utilities and we'll limp by with our sewer systems and when you think about these lot sizes, that's some real challenges long term within our city boundaries to uh preserve the ability to have homes in this area, right? I mean, eventually you have conflicts with your well and or your sewer being too close or the soil's not working. And so there's a important element that we consider that although maybe expensive, unaffordable for now, uh in the long term is going to be something that we at least should put a lot of thought into. And maybe it comes to the same conclusion. My personal feeling is uh this has come upon pretty quick. Uh, know about the project but didn't really know about the decision not to include utilities. Uh, philosophically tend to believe uh if you have the opportunity, you gotta give it a full chance to do the right thing. And no matter how difficult it is, this is gonna be very expensive. It might not be possible. Uh, let's see here. I want to address Mayor Waller's. I think at the beginning you said, "Well, we got this 1.6 million dollar grant and we're gonna be up against the wall. Might lose the grant if we don't make this decision." I have uh, I I think authority as the chair of the ATP to say that's not true. Uh, you have the opportunity so you choose in the city uniquely, maybe a little bit at this time, to make some funding swaps with the city of Moorhead. They got a massive project that's gonna use the federal Surface Transportation Block Grant for the three years of '24, '25 and '26. And so there's really an opportunity for the cities, uh should you choose to take it, to delay this project, still retain your federal money, uh plan around what you can do, see if there's some unique financing. So I guess I'm just encouraging you uh to pause, not jump to a conclusion to say, "Engineer, go ahead, finish this project. We're not gonna do utilities because it's not affordable." Until you can do a proper request of of landowners and see if it is something that is a better choice long term for the city and uh kind of approach it in that regard. So, thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Uh, Donnie Waller's, 24020 State Highway 9. Um, I just want to make a quick comment. I was, my mom and dad and myself were the first people to put one of the cul-de-sacs right past the townhomes, right at city limits. Um, at that point, that's where Brian Geez lives, Marie, we came to the city and asked the city to let us put sewer and water in when we were developing that first cul-de-sac. And we were told by Ed Larson that absolutely not. That'll never be part of the city. So I just wanted you to know that when we developed it, we tried to put that into the city and tried to get water and sewer at our own expense and we were told no.
Thank you. Brian?
Uh, I forgot one point I was gonna make. Uh, we're talking about this utilities in complete sewer and water. Uh, I think it's also worth considering maybe water's affordable if sewer isn't because of lift station and forced mains and all this stuff. There at least seems to be an obligation on the city to provide fire protection for its citizens in which there is none when you extend past the ballpark. So
A legal, a legal obligation of the city? You know, cause you and I have talked and and when you use words like obligation and liability, um, I just want you to know and understand that is not the case.
Okay, fair. I'll, I'll retract the obligation side. I think it's a good practice. It certainly uh changes our insurance rates when we uh don't have fire protection close by so
Anybody else like to approach the council? Now would be a good time.
I'm Greg Prest. I live at 20866 467th Avenue. Um, this does feel quite rushed to me. I'm new to the city but uh where I came from, if there was these kinds of decisions that were being made, everyone who lived within 500 feet of the project would be noticed and would be a part of the conversation. And this just feels like that hasn't happened here at all. And I really like some of the things that uh Brian and John have said about this. Um, if we can slow this down, wait till we get a new city manager, do some things innovative to push this money out, the federal money out. Just feel like it should be table for right now.
Thanks, Greg. Joe?
Uh, Joe Riley. 46, 46502 208th Street. Um, I was at the meetings here 25 years ago when the when this project was being talked about and and Ed Larson was city manager then. And when they redone Seventh Street, like Brian said, Merle Early actually put the project on hold for a year. He wanted, that was a county road. He wanted to redo that county road and he put it on hold for a year. And I know his exact words to me was, "I'm hoping the city will come to their senses and put the water and sewer in under the road and we'll pay for the road. All they gotta do is pay for the pipe we're putting in the ground." And the reason it didn't happen was uh I was at several, two, two different meetings here and the homeowners were all against it. Everybody was against it because they didn't want to pay the assessment. The assessment at that time was gonna be 20 or 25,000 dollars. And myself and Slim Holkinson, who's no longer alive, we were the only two in the whole neighborhood that wanted that that to happen. And um it never happened because everybody else that was, lived in the area was against it. And I think you're gonna, part of the problem now is I think most of the homeowners are gonna be against it now too. You know, I'm, I'm not. I'm in favor of it. I'd like to see it happen. But I realize it's gonna be an uphill battle but I think you're gonna have a lot of homeowners to deal with because they don't want to pay the assessment.
Becky Young and I'm Brian's neighbor, 20896 468th. Um, I, I agree with a lot of what's been said. I don't want to repeat that but um, I know this isn't your guys' as a council's fault but it is a community problem and there's been real lack of community engagement. That might not be required but it might be what's necessary. Um, this is a silently building crisis environmentally. Um, you know, Blaine and I had had some conversations and he replied back that it was the county's problem if all the septic's fail and there's nowhere for them. And that is not true. Um, it's the homeowner's problem. And if there's nowhere for a septic to go, um, you're probably looking at a holding tank and like John had said, you're looking at um between 300 and 415 dollars per pump for a homeowner. And you can figure with a family of four, that's probably gonna be two to four times a month depending how much they do laundry. That's a significant impact and that's a pretty good payment on an assessment. I don't, I don't want a $35,000 assessment. I don't want a $40,000 assessment. But I also don't want worthless homes within the city's boundaries. And there is not room for repeated um septic installations on all these properties. You know, Brian and I and some others here have enough land so it doesn't, I mean, it's not really an avin- it's not advantageous to me to say, "Hey, this has to be $35,000, $40,000." But um I do think that um some community meetings, some costs so that we can see what those are, are worth the time spent to do that. That doesn't cost us anything except some uh meeting space and paying some staff some wages to explain it. Um, you know, could you do some things like Brian suggested, maybe get water in or maybe, maybe stub the main line in but it's there for the future? Um, you know, a part of this problem is, is that, you know, if you're looking at holding tanks, what does that do to the value of the property when you're trying to resell that property? I think that it, there's the argument that can be made that without these services someday, these properties are gonna be very costly to maintain. And um we all know that this isn't gonna get cheaper as a problem. So I just, I would encourage some extra time, um some more information to the actual the people. You know, you say our taxes don't pay for it. If our fees do, let us, let us have some input and some um feedback to you guys as a council when you're making these decisions. Thank you.
You know, and I guess I'd, I'd just like to comment, you know, if this project is, as we all know, so everybody in the audience knows, this is something that this council has thought through quite a bit. We had a a closed meeting and discussed it. Uh, Jeff Coon was here, presented the whole scope of the project to us and I think everyone sitting here would probably be in agreement with me that we'd like to see nothing more than to see water and sewer get there. But we have to figure out how we're gonna pay for it and that's kind of what Blaine, where Blaine was going with that and I, I kind of, I agree to a point with what uh City Manager Hill said. If we continue to look at this project through the way we've currently done projects through assessment only, it's gonna be not doable. But I also think that it might be an opportunity for us to look at other things that we've never considered before uh as a council and to my knowledge probably ever. Uh, I know there are a general obligation utility bonds that you could consider. And what, what was, I've been kind of thinking of this thing through and perhaps we, we separate these projects out. The street uh portion of the project would be a general obligation bond and and then that would go back to that 20% assessment to the homeowners because whether you stub in or not, uh, you'd have to still have that assessment. Now, that being said, if you don't stub on, stub in right away, maybe they could apply for a deferral. I don't know. I mean, that would be something Aaron Jordan and maybe Blaine could speak to but uh if, and then the utility portion could be uh, if, and then the utility portion could be paid for by, uh, a general obligation utility bond. So you separate the two out. I don't think, Blaine, maybe you can speak to that, but I don't think we've ever even considered doing anything like that. But this project affects so many people from, uh, the businesses. I know Marie's here, she has a daycare on that street. Pam Methune has a daycare on Seventh Street. Joe and John have businesses there. And, you know, we as, really our, our fundamental obligation here as a council is to look out for the health and welfare of our constituents. And when we get to the point, the way this country's going now with all of the MPCA guidelines and restrictions, who knows where this is gonna go with septic systems, five, ten years down the road? But I think that's the view we have to take a look at as a council before we make any final decisions. So, I'm not gonna say anymore if any other people would like to attack, uh, approach the council before I close out the citizens' comments portion, that would, you're more than welcome to.
And I would make a recommendation that you move the decision on East Seventh Street up to now 'cause it doesn't make a lot of sense to go back into our regular agenda and then have everybody sit here and wait. Um, one of the things you mentioned, just, just so you understand, one of my jobs is knowing and understanding how city stuff is financed. So when you're talking about general obligation bonds, that's what we do. That's how we finance utilities. We, we sell bonds. And in some cases, uh, we, we have issues that wouldn't be backed by any revenue source like utilities. Uh, and actually in Morris, in order for you to do a bond like that, you'd have to have a vote of the people, swimming pool, good example. We don't do a swimming pool in Morris 'cause the people have to vote it in 'cause the city council can't spend money that way in the City of Morris, according to the rules. But we can do revenue bonds if they're backed by utilities. And, and typically, you had mentioned that it'd be nice if you'd talk to the people. If we're gonna go to the people that live in this neighborhood to do an assessment, the first thing that we would do is we'd set up an assessment project and we would give notice to every single person in that area that we're gonna have a public hearing and we would explain exactly what the project was, what the costs were, what the assessments were gonna be. And then we'd ask you, "Do you want us to do it or not?" But in this case, um, we couldn't assess you if we wanted to because one of the things that we have to do as a city is we have to show property owners that the value of that assessment, and right now, we talked about it in a work session and actually wasn't closed to the public. It was just a council work session where they could look at information and not make decisions on it and then bring it back to an open or, uh, a regular meeting of the city council. But we talked about that and we looked at information. So we're looking at assessments potentially, you know, you mentioned it was twenty-five thousand before. Now we're looking at thirty-eight thousand of assessments. That's assuming the city would pick up twenty-five percent. But the only way we could move forward with that is if everybody agreed to it. If a hundred percent of the people wanted this project to go, then we could do it. And we could sell the bonds and we could pay for it the way we normally do all of our projects. But I guarantee you, you're not gonna get a hundred percent of the people. You're probably not gonna get seventy-five percent, you're probably not gonna get fifty percent. One of the things I recommended during the work session is, do we wanna send information out to the people? Do we wanna survey the people to see what they're interested in doing? You know, those are all things that we talked about doing, but there is no assessment project to provide that information out to everybody yet. And that's something that we certainly could do. Brian mentioned we could move the pro, the road project back to probably twenty twenty, twenty-five, which we probably could do. Uh, we talked about that, we talked about that with our engineer that oversees that kinda stuff. Uh, but at the same time, that gives you one more year to look at whether or not you're gonna be able to do water and sewer along Seventh Street in all these alt line areas. And I can tell you that the cost of doing that is not fundable. That's my job. My job is to recommend to them what we can do as a city. It's not fundable. The city can't do it a hundred percent. At seventy-five percent, it's gonna cost every property owner that has utilities in Morris about, like I said, ninety percent more for water and a hundred and forty percent more for sewer. I don't wanna pay that much more in my utility bill to provide water and sewer out in this neighborhood when it were, they were built this way. These properties were built this way with wells and septic tanks. And now you have wells and septic tanks. Um, I, I think, you know, Rebecca and I talked about this. It's not gonna be the county that is, you know, gonna come down on septic tanks. It's gonna be the state of Minnesota that eventually might set a rule that you have to do something with septic tanks. We don't regulate septic tanks. Uh, they're regulated through a different process. But if the state came down and said, "This is what you're gonna have to do", more than likely, they're gonna have to provide funding before they do it 'cause that's kinda the way things work. Uh, right now, they're talking about lead pipes and what's gonna happen with lead pipes. If people have lead pipes, if the city has lead pipes, and they're talking about putting money into the system to help, help deal with that. But you cannot print money. Taxes do not pay for utilities. They never have. Taxes pay for other things. Utility fees pay for utilities. That's the way the system is funded, a hundred percent. I've been doing this for forty-three years and that's the way they're done. And when the city manager, I wasn't here for annexation. I'm not sure what the issue was for annexation. I can't imagine the issue for annexation was, "We need to get all these properties onto water and sewer." I'm assuming the reason for annexation was, they're afraid that the population was gonna go under five thousand and if it did, then we'd lose our state aid road funding. You know, I think that's part of what was discussed. But I wasn't here. It's not, this is not an annexation issue. This is a, how do you fund water and sewer for properties that have never had it? Because they were all, the people that do have it, they paid for it when they bought their lot. That's the way it worked. That's the way, that's the way Hartland works out in that neighborhood there, Grand State, all those places. They got their water and sewer because they bought a lot and that lot came with utilities. And, and that's the way it is, that's the way it is in the city government.
Just want, to be clear, it's not the state taking away the ability to do septic systems. That's not what I said. I said that there's a limited land amount to do septic replacements and that's a completely separate issue. Is that most of these homeowners at some point in the next forty years will end up with a hole in the thing. They go out the pump two to four times a month, just like John's trying to do with his business property.
We, but we can't rectify that.
No, but I, I'm just, you kinda twisted my word just a little bit.
Well, no, but I-
Take away that, but that's not what I-
Right, right now, there's no, other than if they can't put in the system that they have, they'd have to go to a tank system, which they can do.
I mean, I just, I just think if you look at your Morris model and you talk about resiliency and clean energy and all this stuff for the future and climate protection, what is cornerstone for climate protection? Clean water and wastewater management?
Right, but you have to have money.
I understand that, but I'm-
And we don't have money.
I, 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 the analysis isn't appropriate, sorry, Mayor. Um, I don't wanna get into that before. I'm just saying, I think that we're short sighted if we're always focused on is clean energy and not clean water.
Well, and we are focused on clean water 'cause that's the reason we built a brand-new water treatment plant that we didn't need.
You would want everybody on city services that you could if you-
We'd love to have. I, I think that would be the goal. And maybe, maybe we'll do nothing with Seventh Street until we can try to find a way to get federal and state money that will pay for doing water and sewer going out to all these places. What's the odds of that happening? You know, 'cause that would be the next step. You know, you need outside money to be able to do this. Borrowing money is not a, it's not a problem, it's paying it back. That's what the problem is, 'cause the, everybody that pays utilities has to pay it back.
What's the debt, what's the debt service on the wastewater treatment and how long does the bond go to?
Uh, typically, our bonds are probably fifteen years.
'Cause the rates were not to pay the debt service for that facility, right?
For the water treatment plant.
Yes, for the portion that didn't get funded through the, the six million roughly of the water treatment plant got put on the fees.
Uh, yeah.
So that's, that's, was, the fees went up to cover the debt service, the water treatment?
Yeah, I can't tell you what the amount was offhand, but, but yeah, we had to raise, uh, utility fees. But at the same time, most people didn't need a softener and were not paying for the salt or the amount of water that it needed to run the softener.
I'm just saying that the rates already went up, so if the rates hadn't have been, the debt service capacity for that utility cash flow portion of this project.
The rates, the rates did go up, they dou, we doubled the rates.
Yeah, they, they, they did go up.
Yeah.
I'd like to make one more comment. Um, as you, as you're getting ready to vote on this project, I hope that, it, it sounds like for sure that we're not gonna get city water and sewer out in our neighborhood, but I hope that you're not gonna take away the, at least put new asphalt down the road so we at least have a smoother road to drive on.
Well, that's the recommendation, is that we do the road project that we have a hundred percent funding for.
Money's just by not getting a road because we're not gonna get water and sewer.
And I don't, I don't know who originally plotted those lots. Was that the planning commission that would've been involved in that, decide, determine the size of the lots?
Developers. Whoever, whoever owned the land and subdivided it, planted it out, that's, that's-
So the city had to approve that?
Uh, well, the planning commission would've had to review it and approve it.
Yes.
Which-
Long time ago that was done. All right, uh, would there be anything else anybody would like to say? Otherwise, I'm gonna close the, uh, citizens' comments portion of the meeting and then we'll, uh, we'll bring it back to the council here for action. Um, as you know, last meeting, we, it was voted down, do the project without sewer and water, but in, in conversing with Aaron Jordan, we can bring this back up. It's called the renewal of the motion that was previously voted down. And we are, uh, in accordance with Robert's rules to do that. So, uh, that being said, I'm, I'll, uh, turn it back over to the city council to take action on this. Uh, we'll just need a motion of some sort and then we'll put it to a vote.
What are we voting on?
So the motion would be to move forward with East Seventh Street without water and sewer. And then we would go back to the engineer and direct the engineer to begin the process of doing the grant project for that.
Or, I mean, yeah, that's the motion at hand, but if that gets voted down, then well that-
That's the recommendation. If it gets voted down, then-
You're gonna need, you're gonna need a motion to renewal, have a renewal of the motion.
Well, just the re, it, it's just, that's what it is. It's the renewal of the motion doing East Seventh Street without city water and sewer. So that's the motion that we'll need.
That's, you have to, you have to do that for something.
That's all we need and then you guys, then I'll take action.
Well, I, I guess, you know, listening to this and too, and, and being a part of it years ago too, and I, I mean, I agree, this is, you know, it's happening kinda fast and, but, and I see both sides of this, this equation because, um, when we put the plant in, everybody's water rates went up. We doubled everybody's water rates in town. You know, guys in the businesses, it hurt them, I mean, you know, they use it, and, and my water went up too. So, what we generally do is it's seventy-five percent for water and sewer. If we hold true to what we do fairly for everybody in town and what we've done for years and it's our precedent, exactly what we do, we would have to assess roughly thirty-eight thousand dollars per, and this is an average, some are a lot more, some are less. It's an average assessment of thirty-eight thousand dollars. Now, if we can't prove that that increases your market value of your home, you can fight that in district court and have it lowered down to, if it's twenty thousand or whatever. Well, in, in that sense, then we really can't afford it if, if that becomes everybody doing it. And also, if we go ahead and only ten percent of the people wanna hook up right away, well, what do, what do we do with, how do we get the revenue from everybody? Uh, you know, where do we find all that revenue to pay for everything and to do it fairly like we've done every other project? Uh, so it, it's, I, I think we should have a city water and sewer there. And I, and I think that if we're gonna do it, and that would, that would be fine with me, even if my, even if my water bill went up, it's still, everybody has been feeded or treated fairly in that situation. I don't see that happening, but also, um, I'm not saying that it couldn't. So, I'm, at this point, I think maybe, maybe it's wise to, maybe, my, in my opinion, maybe it's wise to look at it a little longer, you know? Maybe we should push back the money or whatever we have to do there. But I do like some of these ideas, or maybe something comes up that we can do it. Um, you know, I think along the way, all the way up and, and maybe the city has said, you know, I've heard people say, "Oh, the city said they're gonna bring a city water and sewer." It, it, somebody probably did say that. I'm pretty sure Blaine never said it and I've never had anybody say it in the ten years that I've been on the, here. But I think people get the idea that we're gonna bring it to you and then all you have to do is you hook up to it and start paying your bill. Well, it doesn't kinda work that way. And I think that when people get the sticker shock of the assessment, uh, people start to, uh, go, "Ooh, I don't know if I necessarily want to be in it." That's exactly what happened to me years ago, so. I guess, I, I like, I know that maybe the funding is there for the road, um.
You know? I don't think it makes sense to do the road because normally the water and sewer goes under the road. So to do the road and then to have to have the added expense or extra expense to do that, if we can transfer the funds over to another project in our community, get more information, see if there's more funds available. We, I guess I didn't realize that we had such an issue with so many property owners with their tanks that have to get pumped on a monthly or twice a month basis. So I think we need to get feedback from the residents, get even more information, see if we can locate some other funding. And to move the project with our federal funds elsewhere in town, which I believe at our last meeting we discussed, we can move it over to Pacific Avenue and put this one on the burner, on a back burner to get more information, to gather more facts and to see what kind of, and some surveys from property owners, what status they're sitting on with their current water and sewer. But as like Brian said, if you don't hook up, we can't get you to hook up and start paying the fees to help pay for the projects. We need everyone's participation to make it work. So, I think we need to just, just move it back, move our funds to another location in town and gather more information and see if we can find other financial revenue sources to help pay for it.
Well, and we don't have another project.
But say, I think we can't move it to?
Well, we don't have a project on Pacific right now. We have done nothing to develop a project on Pacific Avenue. Uh, we can go back to Jeff Kuhn and go back to the committee and see if they're willing to slide that funding. So then you would lose the one point six million that's gonna go to Seventh Street and it would go to Pacific Avenue and now there's no money for Seventh Street. Uh, that's left, you'd have to go back and reapply for funding, maybe down the road, for, for that project. But we don't have a project, you know, and one of the things that we did at the last meeting, um, 'cause during the work session, the question came up about projects. What other projects that we have going on? And so actually, uh, uh, at the last meeting, we talked about the financing and we talked about the fact that the next project that we need to look at doing in, in Morris is on the West Side, Sunset Place and Albany Avenue, that area around there. We've been having problems with, uh, water main breaks and things like that. And then we come back to some other in-town projects like Fifth, or, uh, East Side projects like Fifth Street and Third Street and some of those. But Pacific Avenue, actually, out of the five that we talked about, would've been further down 'cause we can still maintain, you know, I talked to the Public Works Director, we can, we can do maintenance on Pacific Avenue to fill potholes and, and, and do some road surfacing stuff. Uh, but if you're gonna do Pacific Avenue, there is a, there is a water line there. And so we would have to develop a special assessment project and we would have to go to all the property owners there to go through that process. And, and so, so of the projects that we talked about, we talked about Seventh Street in twenty twenty-four, uh, the West Side in twenty twenty-five. So we would start developing that project for a public hearing next year, you know, with the property owners there, uh, to go in, 'cause that would be a special assessment project.
Now, Pacific, Blaine, if I remember right, that's water only, right? 'Cause the sewer was- was updated the last time that.
Sewer goes through the alley.
Goes through the alley, yeah, so it would just be water only. Well, and you, did you say that this, we could probably keep this, if we push this forward, this project forward, do some more research on it like Jeff had proposed, we could, I mean, and if we wouldn't lose it, would we, we'd just push it back?
Well, I think, I think you could go back to, to the state and, and file the paperwork to move it to twenty-twenty-five, and like Brian said, then Morehead would get a project in twenty-twenty-four, but you're just buying time to try to find an answer to a question you already have, that's what I'm telling you as a city manager, you already have the answer to the question, that is, you cannot finance this water and sewer in, in these neighborhoods, you're not gonna be able to do it, it's gonna be a major, major undertaking uh to, to even do the project, just one other quick note too, you know, when we talk about proving value, uh, one of the things that we do, if we're gonna do an assessment project over on the West Side, we actually hire an appraisal company out of the Twin Cities that will do an appraisal of all the properties before a project is done, and then they will give us a value of what that project would increase the value of, of that property, and that's a requirement that we have, that ultimately if we have a property owner that says there's no way in heck I'm paying for this assessment, uh, I'm gonna file an appeal, I'm gonna go to district court, no, we have to go to the judge and prove to him that if it's thirty-eight thousand, whatever it is, that we increased the value of your property by that much money, you're not gonna be able to do it, I can already tell you, that's not gonna happen. And then what happens if you have a brand-new well, so there's zero value of bringing you water, you already have water, what if you have a septic tank that's five years old, now you have a problem, cause we've looked at a lot of this stuff where, do we prorate the cost of that assessment based upon the fact that you have, you know, a, a septic tanks or a septic system, that's, I don't know what the life of a septic system is, but uh, if you, if it's five years old, that we can't bill you for brand-new sewer, um, you know, cause those are all things that you have to take into consideration, cause ultimately a judge is gonna sit and look at that and go, you, you can't force these people to pay this money, you know, if they get no benefit from it, and that's just the life that we live with in city government, we have to do it on every single project that we do, and, and fortunately, we've been lucky that, that citizens have been pretty receptive because they know and understand what it means to have a bad road and have a water line that breaks, like over on the West Side, a water line that's breaking, we gotta fix it in the middle of the winter and stuff like that, but a year's not gonna buy you any, any more time to find a magic solution to this, cause this is, this is city financing one-on-one, really, is what it is, this is how we do um infrastructure in cities like Morris.
So that's just so disappointing to hear, Blaine, because I hear people here wanting us to take time to look at this and how we can get it.
Well, no, you can look at it, I'm just.
But then you're also saying, but finance one-on-one, it's not gonna happen because it won't ever be cost-effective for us, or?
Well, we're, we're the experts.
And I'm not saying that, but I'm just, what are we telling our, the people here, our citizens, that, sorry, you're out of luck? I mean, that's kinda what I'm hearing, and it's like, I don't know if you guys.
I recommend, I recommended the last time when we had the work session, what do you wanna do, do you wanna survey them to find out?
And I thought we said we did.
No, no, there is no direction to send information out to the people to survey them, to do anything, you know, and, and at the last meeting, there was no additional direction to do anything.
Well, two of us weren't even here at the last meeting.
Right, well, that's, yeah, and so then we simply brought the discussion back, so every, so you can hear and understand, cause the two kinda unknowns during the work session were, what other projects do we have in the city that we're looking at doing, and then what is the financial impact of trying to finance this water and sewer, and so now you have that information, you know, so that you can see it, you know, and so then, I mean, we, you, you could go out to everybody there and send them, I don't know, a survey or a letter, and then find out what, if, but the, the bottom line is, this is how we fund stuff, so when we tell them that, and, and see what their response is, what happens, cause if you do a special assessment project, um, it's gonna fail on, on the benefit of this.
Okay, you can't break out the utility separate from the street, just apply that one-point-six to the street, and then, and then have another bond to do the utilities portion of it, and that would of course be a levy, right, Blaine, across the whole city?
No.
No.
You don't do it.
It's a special assessment bond, but, you know, but if you, if you broke out the street portion, you know, um, there is nothing, there is nothing on Seventh Street, cause it's a hundred percent funded, if you're gonna do all the little side streets and all that kinda stuff, um, you, and, and actually, the, maybe the answer to that question is, whenever we sell a bond, we typically will do things together, not apart, so for instance, um, you, you do a utility bond, you do a, a, a bond that has a utility portion, the last one we did had a equipment portion, and, and that saves you the cost of bonding, plus it probably gets you a better interest rate because of the size of the bond, but, um.
Well, I mean, I, I, I think whether or not uh anybody personally or professionally thinks that we can't make it happen here, which it, it may, it may or may not, um, the, the motion was voted down last week, and we have not made a motion to renew it at this time, if so, that would just be.
It just stands in place.
That we weren't, yeah, it stays in place and we weren't gonna do it.
Yeah.
And, um, I just, I just feel that I, I'm, I'm not personally going to make that motion because I've, I think that a lot of people, even though it maybe, maybe it won't work any year, maybe it'll be the same answer, but maybe we just need to, maybe something will come up, I don't know, or, and maybe we need to do is send some stuff out to everybody and get their feeling about, you know, this is, this is the reality of it, that's the assessment, that's, it's a lot of money, um, and this is what's gonna happen, and this is what's gonna happen if, if we would go down that road, so I think that we need to see it a little bit more, uh, you know, like Rebecca said, you know, think about it, maybe, you know, if we put it back a year, that gives us some time to maybe something comes up, maybe some different funding for our special situation, I don't know, but at this time, I just, a little uneasy about doing the road, I wanna do the road, but, and I wanna use the money, but I don't wanna miss the opportunity to, to get it out to the people that need it and service the people that have to do it, but it has to be done in the way that we've done it, in my opinion, that we've done it for everybody else in, in a fair, fair manner.
And I think what I hear you saying, Brian, is we just wanna make sure we get it right, we just wanna get it right, cause there was a mistake, we can't change the mistake that was made, but we're only gonna get one shot at this here, this group, to get it right, and I think to get it right, we just need to take a little bit more look, a stronger look at some possibilities, and who knows, like Brian said, a year from now, maybe the state will throw a lot of money at a project like this, and maybe not, I don't know, but.
I think we also have to go looking for that, you just can't sit here and go, somebody throws some money at us, I mean, we have to do diligence to be looking at how we can get water and sewer out to everyone who actually is in the city limits and extending that maybe even, um.
Heard from everybody in the council, Zach, you got anything you wanna add before we probably move on, if there's no motion, I guess at all?
I, I got a motion to recommend to you though, once.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm listening to everyone, listening to all, thank you, everyone that has addressed the council, I appreciate the time that you came in and, and all of your statements, it's good to hear, right, that's something that we don't usually get, there's people coming in and, and voicing one way or the other, you know, it's, it's usually it's snow or whatever, right, like, that's usually what we get, um, I think it, I think for us, it really comes down to the, we have to be good stewards, and we have to put forth a very, very diligent effort here, right, and that's, I, I very much agree with the comments that council member Solvi made, that like, I, I'm in the same boat, like, I'd love to do the road, it, it's, it's in need of it, but at the same point, like, I think your, your uh recommendation states what's done is done, and that's, that, that, we're, we're running into some difficult situations where we're gonna have to, I don't wanna say try and rectify what was done, because that might not be a solution, but I think that we need to spend some more time and make sure that we, like you commented and, and you commented, try and get it right, and I don't know what that looks like, and that's the difficult portion, because listening to you, city manager Hill, it's, you know, the way that we've always done it, and that's. I understand that, and I appreciate that. And I, I also realize that we have quite a few citizens that are here tonight that, that want to see this project go with water and sewer, I'm sure we have just as many that aren't here that don't, and so, I honestly, I'm conflicted with it, right, that's, that's the honest answer.
Yeah. Okay.
So, the, the motion that I would recommend to you is that, uh, we direct the city engineer, Jeff Kuhn, to make a request to bin dot, to change our project from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five, and then that gives the state of Minnesota the ability to do their work, and then that buys you time to look into this further, and, and, uh, cause I know Jeff's been kinda waiting for that. And that doesn't mean you couldn't change it to a different project at some point.
Right.
But it just pushes it down the road.
Well, I think one more year's not a big deal, it's our, this project has been kicked down the road for probably the last twenty, twenty-five years, so what's one more year? Throw it back over to the council for take action on that motion.
I will make the motion to move forward with the East Seventh Street project, as the city manager had stated, to, to push it back an additional year to see if we can find some additional funding and to allow the city engineers to begin the work to draw up the plans on it, but hopefully to do some legwork and see if we can find some additional funding.
Okay, thank you, we got a motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, I think what I'm gonna do actually is we'll have a roll call on that motion, I think it's better to have a accurate vote on that, so we'll have a roll call on that motion, please.
Councilwoman Cross?
Yes.
Solvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gallopson?
Yes.
Mayor Hollis?
Yes. Okay. Twenty-twenty-five it is, for those of you wanna hang around, you sure can, Greg, did you have something you wanna say?
No, I'm, I should go.
Okay, yeah, thanks for coming, you guys. Okay, we have no public hearings tonight, we shall move on with a reading and approval of the March twenty-eighth, uh, regular meeting minutes.
I'll move approval of the March twenty-eighth regular minutes.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, carried. Uh, then we have the condensed version of the minutes from March twenty-eighth.
I'll move approval of the, uh, March twenty-eighth condensed version of the minutes.
I'll second.
A motion in a second, all those in favor, see, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, carried. Uh, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the audit of city bills, transit report, application for exempt permit for the Church of the Assumption of Blessed Virgin Mary, and I'll just throw it over to the council for action on the consent agenda.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the items on the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carried. We have no petitions, requests, and communications, we have no ordinances, resolutions, we will now move on to the city manager newsletter.
Yeah, we had a good meeting with, uh, student association out at the college, I think that was, uh, good for both groups, I think they understood a little bit better what we do as a city, and we understood a little bit better what, what's going on out at the campus, and, and, and so, you know, one of the interesting things to me was that they did a survey of the students to see how they felt about working for employers in Morris, cause I think in the beginning, there was some question about, you know, how students were treated and stuff, and they were really amazed at the results, that sounds like most students are very happy with, uh, the employers that they worked for, but that's just one of those things where, you know, you, the, I was really, uh, proud of them for actually doing that survey, you know, and finding out that information, um, I taught civics to the ninth graders, uh, they actually have a really good group of ninth graders, sometimes you get some squirrely ones, and, uh, uh, they had a really good group of ninth graders, and, and actually, uh, we talked about the potential of having a city council meeting with them, and the suggestion is that we do it during fourth hour, which is eleven fifteen in the morning, because they have two groups of ninth graders, we actually combined two classes for one of the sessions, and, uh, and then they would bring in the third group into that, so that's one of those things that if you're interested in doing that, they're talking about the May ninth meeting at, uh, um, and I don't know that there's gonna be a lot of stuff for the agenda, but, uh.
I know that I will be gone at that meeting, but I, I think it's great that we get back to doing it.
Yeah.
I really thought that was great for, you know, the kids and.
Yeah, and actually.
Some of the meetings were pretty dry, but it'd be nice, it'd be nice to get.
It'd be nice to have.
It'd be nice to have something coming up that meant a little something.
Drum up some business.
Drama, let's drum up some drama.
Hey, we could have this one, that would've been awesome.
Yeah.
And that was one of the things at the college too, they, they asked if we could.
Yeah, they would like to have a meeting.
They want a meeting out, in the auditorium out there as well.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, it was a very good meeting, I, I, I really enjoyed it, it's, there, there are a good group of students out there, and I, I think, you know, there's times, and you just gotta get to know the students, you know, I think it's, it was a good chance for us to sit down and just visit, and, uh, I enjoyed it.
Well, and I was surprised, so, at Monday nights, they have a forum, I think it's at seven o'clock, that's open to anybody that wants to come in and sit in and listen what's going on at the campus, you know, like, I never knew that, cause I probably would've went out there and at least sat in on some of them, just to kinda, you know, let them know what's going on with the city and stuff like that, but, uh.
I think, I think it's great, because I think they can, they can figure out actually what, and, and what the city council does and the city does, and it's, you know, it's, it's not like the, the major out there, it's not political, it's, it's running business, it's making decisions for people's roads and water and sewer, and it, it has nothing to do with politics, period, it's really about business, and, and I think that's, that's something that they, it's important for them to see, that it, it doesn't trickle down in what we're doing here, or what decisions we're making, aren't based on that at all, they're based on what, what, what's best for our community or people there, you know, service-wise and everything, uh, and, and also to get out there, maybe, you know, hopefully from this meeting too, that more of our taxpayers, if they watch it, they would know that, you know, what, what do you get for your city taxes, you know, I think that was a good, good, good to get out, that, you know, water and sewer is not paid for by that, it is, it is, it is billed out separately, and, and if, uh, I think that's a misconception about what everything is getting paid for, and I think a bigger, another misconception which you stated is that actually, the, the tax role only pays for about twenty-five percent of our.
Right.
Of what we do.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, the LGA comes in and pays for a lot of it, so, you know, um, we're getting a lot of money from the state to even make all this stuff happen, and I think that's good for the college kids to really, and, and everybody through these meetings and stuff, to really hear these things and, and see if they can digest it, so, I think it's great, so.
And they actually talked to us about, about supporting them with the resolution that, uh, I'm actually working on, so the, the student body passed a resolution, because as, as we know, that, that, that university set of buildings started out as a Native American, uh, school, and there's a lot of discussion at the, at federal level about, you know, looking into these schools and what happened, and, and so, they asked us if the city council would support a resolution asking for a commission to be formed at the federal level to look into these and, and, uh, uh, you know. to look into these and, and, uh, uh, you know, we talked a little bit about it afterwards and it seems like, uh, uh, we don't, you know, one of the things I told them, we normally don't do a lot of resolutions on things that don't have anything to do with what we're doing, but this might be a really good opportunity to, uh, you know, you know, bind with them a little bit and actually, um, they will come here and they'll talk about it. So
That'd be great.
Then, uh, we know who the new incoming student council president's going to be and, and vice president and, and so that's kind of nice to put a, a, a name and face together. So, yeah, that was, that was good. I was actually felt really good about it when we left, because, uh, I had no idea what they're interested in. Um, we got some German interns that are in Morris now. I think they're all here this week. There's three of them. One is going to be working with Troy Goodno and, and us actually, um, on, on some, some issues with sustainability and then two of them are working at the research farm. Uh, so, so it's kind of nice to know that, that, uh, the university in, in Moonster is still sending students this way and, and, uh, they, they like being here. So, um, the only other thing I'd probably just touch on is I, I sat in on a coalition agreement Minnesota cities meeting. Uh, it was like a wet, uh, update on the legislature and there wasn't a lot of clear understanding exactly what's going to happen. There's six weeks left and they think the beginning of May, they will have all their committee work going on all the bills and as of right now, I think the governor's at forty million for LGA. I think the house is at a hundred million for LGA plus an inflationary, uh, um, item, which that's a big thing right now in the legislature is putting inflation onto the things that they're spending money on. Whether or not that'll pass, I don't know, but with inflation at the current rate, I think there is quite a bit more money that would be on top of that hundred million, but, um, we're going to know more in six weeks because everything is going to have to be done. And I think the biggest if is going to be the bonding bill because that requires, uh, the Republicans to, uh, participate in that. But I'd answer any other questions that, uh, you might have. And if, it sounds like you're interested in doing that meeting in May, uh, so what I can do is on the next agenda, I'll just put a item on there to have you change the meeting date to May. And if anything comes up between now and then, I'll go back and let them know that that's-
At eleven fifteen.
At eleven fifteen.
So that'll be what day then? May?
May next day.
May ninth?
That, our normal date.
Make that work, Zach.
At eleven fifty.
I won't be here, sorry.
Zach, make that work.
Yeah.
Shake out of work.
Yeah, unless, wow, I'll just take some PLT. Um, unless I've got, uh, unless I'm out of town for any reason for work related things, but I don't think so.
We still have the April twenty-fifth meeting, right?
Uh, yes, correct.
Yeah, okay. Gotcha. Do you need a motion on that, moving that meeting?
Uh, if you want to make it now, you could make it now. Otherwise we could put it on the agenda for next time. If you, if, if everybody thinks that's what we should do, I'd put a motion on the table.
Or make a motion, we have our-
I don't know. I might have a work training that day.
Yeah.
I just have to find out. I know May ninth, I think it's mainly-
We can push it back till next meeting and take out.
Yeah, let's see what works for everybody.
Yeah, I told him I, I told him I would go to you and find out.
I just got to check, because that means then for sure two will be there in-
Next meeting.
Fifty, fifty.
Fifty, fifty, so.
Yeah, it's a good idea, but yeah.
Yep.
I, yeah, I got to check for some reason that sounds-
Is everybody going to be there for the next meeting then? May, uh,
Forty-fifth?
April twenty-fifth.
April fif-
Or the, uh, yeah, so.
What are you going to have? What are you going to have on the agenda?
For April twenty-fifth. Well, actually, we're going to have a couple bid openings. So we'll have one on the transit bus garage and we'll have one on the airport, um, uh, apron project.
Plan on it.
Any questions on anything?
All right, that's it for the city managers newsletter. We have board member updates. Uh, anybody have anything to report? Specifically Jeff and I could probably speak to the advisory committee. Um, I guess update if you will. Jeff, you want to maybe just give everybody a quick update on where we're at?
We met yesterday, just, uh, reviewed pretty much the agreement to go over with, uh, our new hire hopefully, just, uh, made a few changes and was going to send that on to the city attorney and, and also to Patrick, just to see if either of those could give us any updates or enlightenment on things that we saw that thought could be changed. Uh, to date, uh, I think we have five potential candidates. So we've still got a couple of weeks to go on our process, I think through the twenty-sixth or twenty-ninth. So, yeah, interesting times.
Yeah, we're, I mean, I'm well pleased with how things are going. The, all the applicants we received though are from out of state. I was surprised to not see any from Minnesota, but, you know, we'll, we'll see how that all plays out, but yeah, so far so good. Um, any other, well, I guess before I open up to any other business, just maybe, uh, come prepared for the April twenty-fifth meeting. We should probably nail down a topic for our May work session. We talked about having a work session there. We can talk about it again and nail down something then, but I just thought it'd be real beneficial for this council to have a strategic planning workshop, because, you know, kind of coincides with our, our, our budget and so I don't think, since I've been on the council, we've actually ever done a strategic planning workshop session like the, like what I'm proposing, just to discuss goals and some things like that. So it's just something I personally think we should do, but come next meeting, whatever, and you might have some other thoughts too, that'd be fine. Any other thing that come before the council? Hearing none, motion?